Can I get approval of the agenda, please? 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 Can I get approval of the agenda, please?
So moved. So moved. So moved. So moved.
Second. 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 Byers? 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 Byers?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Cadoo Blackwood? Cadoo Blackwood? Cadoo Blackwood? Cadoo Blackwood?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Hello? 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 Franklin? 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 Franklin?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Gordon Ross? Gordon Ross? Gordon Ross? Gordon Ross?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Jones? 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 Jones?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Kimball? 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 Kimball?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Motion passes six zero. Motion passes six zero. Motion passes six zero.
Okay, going to turn the time over to Dr. Swift for some special recognition. Okay, going to turn the time over to Dr. Swift for some special recognition. Okay, going to turn the time over to Dr. Swift for some special recognition. Okay, going to turn the time over to Dr. Swift for some special recognition.
Thank you, President and members of the board, all from the community who are joining Thank you, President and members of the board, all from the community who are joining Thank you, President and members of the board, all from the community who are joining Thank you, President and members of the board, all from the community who are joining us us in person and remote. What a great day in Lawrence Public Schools as we have the us in person and remote. What a great day in Lawrence Public Schools as we have the us in person and remote. What a great day in Lawrence Public Schools as we have the in person and remote. What a great day in Lawrence Public Schools as we have the opportunity opportunity tonight to recognize two outstanding Citizen Awards. And we'll start right away opportunity tonight to recognize two outstanding Citizen Awards. And we'll start right away opportunity tonight to recognize two outstanding Citizen Awards. And we'll start right away tonight to recognize two outstanding Citizen Awards. And we'll start right away with the with the Outstanding Service to Public Education Award, and we have Denise Johnson coming on with the Outstanding Service to Public Education Award, and we have Denise Johnson coming on with the Outstanding Service to Public Education Award, and we have Denise Johnson coming on Outstanding Service to Public Education Award, and we have Denise Johnson coming on down down with some other folks to help us with that award. You know, every Thanksgiving, down with some other folks to help us with that award. You know, every Thanksgiving, down with some other folks to help us with that award. You know, every Thanksgiving, with some other folks to help us with that award. You know, every Thanksgiving, when when many of us are thinking about Thanksgiving dinner, there is one group who shows up and when many of us are thinking about Thanksgiving dinner, there is one group who shows up and when many of us are thinking about Thanksgiving dinner, there is one group who shows up and many of us are thinking about Thanksgiving dinner, there is one group who shows up and makes a contribution that serves our children, our schools, and our community. Interim Principal makes a contribution that serves our children, our schools, and our community. Interim Principal makes a contribution that serves our children, our schools, and our community. Interim Principal makes a contribution that serves our children, our schools, and our community. Interim Principal Prairie Park, Ms. Denise Johnson, is going to help us in sharing our gratitude and our Prairie Park, Ms. Denise Johnson, is going to help us in sharing our gratitude and our Prairie Park, Ms. Denise Johnson, is going to help us in sharing our gratitude and our Prairie Park, Ms. Denise Johnson, is going to help us in sharing our gratitude and our award for these folks this evening. award for these folks this evening. award for these folks this evening. award for these folks this evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Swift. What a nice introduction. I am so incredibly grateful Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Swift. What a nice introduction. I am so incredibly grateful Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Swift. What a nice introduction. I am so incredibly grateful Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Swift. What a nice introduction. I am so incredibly grateful to share all of this with all of you. I know I've probably seen many of you at this Thanksgiving to share all of this with all of you. I know I've probably seen many of you at this Thanksgiving to share all of this with all of you. I know I've probably seen many of you at this Thanksgiving to share all of this with all of you. I know I've probably seen many of you at this Thanksgiving Day Run. We host it at Woodlawn Elementary each year. And standing in front of you are Day Run. We host it at Woodlawn Elementary each year. And standing in front of you are Day Run. We host it at Woodlawn Elementary each year. And standing in front of you are Day Run. We host it at Woodlawn Elementary each year. And standing in front of you are the members and the Board of Run Lawrence. So Run Lawrence is a nonprofit organization the members and the Board of Run Lawrence. So Run Lawrence is a nonprofit organization the members and the Board of Run Lawrence. So Run Lawrence is a nonprofit organization the members and the Board of Run Lawrence. So Run Lawrence is a nonprofit organization that really helps to sponsor not only children and fitness, but the community of Lawrence. that really helps to sponsor not only children and fitness, but the community of Lawrence. that really helps to sponsor not only children and fitness, but the community of Lawrence. that really helps to sponsor not only children and fitness, but the community of Lawrence. And I am just thrilled to be here in front of you. I have a few facts, but I want to And I am just thrilled to be here in front of you. I have a few facts, but I want to And I am just thrilled to be here in front of you. I have a few facts, but I want to And I am just thrilled to be here in front of you. I have a few facts, but I want to introduce introduce everyone to you. So standing right here is Molly Wood, and this is Becky McClure, introduce everyone to you. So standing right here is Molly Wood, and this is Becky McClure, introduce everyone to you. So standing right here is Molly Wood, and this is Becky McClure, everyone to you. So standing right here is Molly Wood, and this is Becky McClure, and and Dee Boick, and Jean Wee. And all four of these individuals, as well as a wealth and Dee Boick, and Jean Wee. And all four of these individuals, as well as a wealth and Dee Boick, and Jean Wee. And all four of these individuals, as well as a wealth Dee Boick, and Jean Wee. And all four of these individuals, as well as a wealth of of other volunteers, help with the Thanksgiving Day Run. Last year, we had over 1,200 runners. of other volunteers, help with the Thanksgiving Day Run. Last year, we had over 1,200 runners. of other volunteers, help with the Thanksgiving Day Run. Last year, we had over 1,200 runners. other volunteers, help with the Thanksgiving Day Run. Last year, we had over 1,200 runners. This is the, we finished the 20th year, so we will be starting year 21. And as I was This is the, we finished the 20th year, so we will be starting year 21. And as I was This is the, we finished the 20th year, so we will be starting year 21. And as I was This is the, we finished the 20th year, so we will be starting year 21. And as I was chatting with Molly and Becky, when we first started this, we had 100? chatting with Molly and Becky, when we first started this, we had 100? chatting with Molly and Becky, when we first started this, we had 100? chatting with Molly and Becky, when we first started this, we had 100?
Hundred.
Hundred. Hundred. Hundred.
We had 100 runners. So it warms my heart because when you look at the registrations, We had 100 runners. So it warms my heart, because when you look at the registrations, We had 100 runners. So it warms my heart, because when you look at the registrations, We had 100 runners. So it warms my heart, because when you look at the registrations, you see like 25 buyers, right? And they're all family. And everybody comes in, and they're you see like 25 buyers, right? And they're all family. And everybody comes in, and they're you see like 25 buyers, right? And they're all family. And everybody comes in, and they're you see like 25 buyers, right? And they're all family. And everybody comes in, and they're from Colorado and California and all over. So it truly is a family event, which is wonderful from Colorado and California and all over. So it truly is a family event, which is wonderful from Colorado and California and all over. So it truly is a family event, which is wonderful from Colorado and California and all over. So it truly is a family event, which is wonderful to see. And I just wanted to share. So the proceeds that come from this event, and what to see. And I just wanted to share. So the proceeds that come from this event, and what to see. And I just wanted to share. So the proceeds that come from this event, and what to see. And I just wanted to share. So the proceeds that come from this event, and what you're seeing is, is just the slides over the last few years of just some of the runners. you're seeing is, is just the slides over the last few years of just some of the runners. you're seeing is, is just the slides over the last few years of just some of the runners. you're seeing is, is just the slides over the last few years of just some of the runners. It's very fun to see the costumes that come out. Last year, at one of the little spots, It's very fun to see the costumes that come out. Last year, at one of the little spots, It's very fun to see the costumes that come out. Last year, at one of the little spots, It's very fun to see the costumes that come out. Last year, at one of the little spots, again, this is all in North Lawrence, we have a local farmer, and he came out with again, this is all in North Lawrence, we have a local farmer, and he came out with again, this is all in North Lawrence, we have a local farmer, and he came out with again, this is all in North Lawrence, we have a local farmer, and he came out with his turkeys, his turkeys, and I got to stand at that location. And so we had shots with the turkeys right his turkeys, and I got to stand at that location. And so we had shots with the turkeys right his turkeys, and I got to stand at that location. And so we had shots with the turkeys right and I got to stand at that location. And so we had shots with the turkeys right there there on Thanksgiving, and they were live, right? Not on somebody's plate, right? So there on Thanksgiving, and they were live, right? Not on somebody's plate, right? So there on Thanksgiving, and they were live, right? Not on somebody's plate, right? So on Thanksgiving, and they were live, right? Not on somebody's plate, right? So very fun. very fun. So just last year alone, we had over 1,300 K5 students that participated in very fun. So just last year alone, we had over 1,300 K5 students that participated in very fun. So just last year alone, we had over 1,300 K5 students that participated in So just last year alone, we had over 1,300 K5 students that participated in elementary elementary marathon clubs. And each one of these students ran at least one marathon, elementary marathon clubs. And each one of these students ran at least one marathon, elementary marathon clubs. And each one of these students ran at least one marathon, marathon clubs. And each one of these students ran at least one marathon, 26.2 miles, and 26.2 miles, and some ran two, three. And we had a few students that ran five marathons 26.2 miles, and some ran two, three. And we had a few students that ran five marathons 26.2 miles, and some ran two, three. And we had a few students that ran five marathons some ran two, three. And we had a few students that ran five marathons over the course of over the course of a school year. Those happen either before school or after school, over the course of a school year. Those happen either before school or after school, over the course of a school year. Those happen either before school or after school, and a school year. Those happen either before school or after school, and they are ran by and they are ran by volunteers in our, in our different schools. Each one, if you would and they are ran by volunteers in our, in our different schools. Each one, if you would they are ran by volunteers in our, in our different schools. Each one, if you would volunteers in our, in our different schools. Each one, if you would add all of that up add all of that up and do the math, that's over 45,000 miles just last year alone that add all of that up and do the math, that's over 45,000 miles just last year alone that add all of that up and do the math, that's over 45,000 miles just last year alone that and do the math, that's over 45,000 miles just last year alone that our little elementary our little elementary kids took on. So it's just a wonderful way to embrace fitness and our little elementary kids took on. So it's just a wonderful way to embrace fitness and our little elementary kids took on. So it's just a wonderful way to embrace fitness and kids took on. So it's just a wonderful way to embrace fitness and health. And I am going health. And I am going to brag on Dee a little bit. So last year, we had, we went to Sunset health. And I am going to brag on Dee a little bit. So last year, we had, we went to Sunset health. And I am going to brag on Dee a little bit. So last year, we had, we went to Sunset to brag on Dee a little bit. So last year, we had, we went to Sunset Hill, and we brought Hill, and we brought all of our kids together at Sunset at the end of the year. And Dee Hill, and we brought all of our kids together at Sunset at the end of the year. And Dee Hill, and we brought all of our kids together at Sunset at the end of the year. And Dee all of our kids together at Sunset at the end of the year. And Dee shared out just how shared out just how important it is for a lifetime of health, and shared that with shared out just how important it is for a lifetime of health, and shared that with shared out just how important it is for a lifetime of health, and shared that with important it is for a lifetime of health, and shared that with our little ones. This our little ones. This group alone, over the last 20 years, has donated over $100,000 our little ones. This group alone, over the last 20 years, has donated over $100,000 our little ones. This group alone, over the last 20 years, has donated over $100,000 group alone, over the last 20 years, has donated over $100,000 to our elementary schools. to our elementary schools. Typically, each year, each school receives about $500. That to our elementary schools. Typically, each year, each school receives about $500. That to our elementary schools. Typically, each year, each school receives about $500. That Typically, each year, each school receives about $500. That pays for their T-shirts, pays for their T-shirts, and little fun trinkets, and so forth along the way. So I would just, pays for their T-shirts, and little fun trinkets, and so forth along the way. So I would just, pays for their T-shirts, and little fun trinkets, and so forth along the way. So I would just, and little fun trinkets, and so forth along the way. So I would just, I'm honored to be I'm honored to be in front of these four individuals that not only help our schools, I'm honored to be in front of these four individuals that not only help our schools, I'm honored to be in front of these four individuals that not only help our schools, in front of these four individuals that not only help our schools, but help our community. but help our community. I've got flowers. Sorry, you're going to have to share, Jean, but help our community. I've got flowers. Sorry, you're going to have to share, Jean, but help our community. I've got flowers. Sorry, you're going to have to share, Jean, I've got flowers. Sorry, you're going to have to share, Jean, but... 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 Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're on a roll this evening. We have another inspiring presentation. This Okay, we're on a roll this evening. We have another inspiring presentation. This Okay, we're on a roll this evening. We have another inspiring presentation. This Okay, we're on a roll this evening. We have another inspiring presentation. This award winner needs no introduction. She is a community icon. Her name, Doris Ricks, award winner needs no introduction. She is a community icon. Her name, Doris Ricks, award winner needs no introduction. She is a community icon. Her name, Doris Ricks, award winner needs no introduction. She is a community icon. Her name, Doris Ricks, is synonymous with service to others, with care for students, and community. She does is synonymous with service to others, with care for students, and community. She does is synonymous with service to others, with care for students, and community. She does is synonymous with service to others, with care for students, and community. She does so much in the community, we can't probably say it all. But we tried to list it in your, so much in the community, we can't probably say it all. But we tried to list it in your, so much in the community, we can't probably say it all. But we tried to list it in your, so much in the community, we can't probably say it all. But we tried to list it in your, in the paragraph in your board docs. Ms. Kristen Ryan is joining us this evening to in the paragraph in your board docs. Ms. Kristen Ryan is joining us this evening to in the paragraph in your board docs. Ms. Kristen Ryan is joining us this evening to in the paragraph in your board docs. Ms. Kristen Ryan is joining us this evening to help us celebrate Doris Ricks' Outstanding Service to Public Education Award. help us celebrate Doris Ricks' Outstanding Service to Public Education Award. help us celebrate Doris Ricks' Outstanding Service to Public Education Award. help us celebrate Doris Ricks' Outstanding Service to Public Education Award.
All right, I have the honor of bragging on Doris Ricks. Volunteer, committed to excellence, All right, I have the honor of bragging on Doris Ricks. Volunteer, committed to excellence, All right, I have the honor of bragging on Doris Ricks. Volunteer, committed to excellence, All right, I have the honor of bragging on Doris Ricks. Volunteer, committed to excellence, high impact, wisdom, professional, advocate for public education, servant heart, honest, high impact, wisdom, professional, advocate for public education, servant heart, honest, high impact, wisdom, professional, advocate for public education, servant heart, honest, high impact, wisdom, professional, advocate for public education, servant heart, honest, and always takes my call. 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 I'm so excited, Doris, for you to receive the Dedicated Community Member Award for Lawrence I'm so excited, Doris, for you to receive the Dedicated Community Member Award for Lawrence I'm so excited, Doris, for you to receive the Dedicated Community Member Award for Lawrence I'm so excited, Doris, for you to receive the Dedicated Community Member Award for Lawrence Public Schools. This honor recognizes your volunteer participation, to name, but I might Public Schools. This honor recognizes your volunteer participation, to name, but I might Public Schools. This honor recognizes your volunteer participation, to name, but I might Public Schools. This honor recognizes your volunteer participation, to name, but I might be missing some, your work on the Equity Advisory Council, the Superintendent's Blue be missing some, your work on the Equity Advisory Council, the Superintendent's Blue be missing some, your work on the Equity Advisory Council, the Superintendent's Blue be missing some, your work on the Equity Advisory Council, the Superintendent's Blue Ribbon Advisory Committee, many administrator interviews, and numerous other district committees. Ribbon Advisory Committee, many administrator interviews, and numerous other district committees. Ribbon Advisory Committee, many administrator interviews, and numerous other district committees. Ribbon Advisory Committee, many administrator interviews, and numerous other district committees. So thank you. Your insight, your commitment to collaboration, you constantly give all So thank you. Your insight, your commitment to collaboration, you constantly give all So thank you. Your insight, your commitment to collaboration, you constantly give all So thank you. Your insight, your commitment to collaboration, you constantly give all of us the best direction and feedback. And so thank you for guiding us on the right path. of us the best direction and feedback. And so thank you for guiding us on the right path. of us the best direction and feedback. And so thank you for guiding us on the right path. of us the best direction and feedback. And so thank you for guiding us on the right path. Kevin Kelly, CEO of Peaslee Tech, where Doris is on faculty, she's teaching leadership Kevin Kelly, CEO of Peaslee Tech, where Doris is on faculty, she's teaching leadership Kevin Kelly, CEO of Peaslee Tech, where Doris is on faculty, she's teaching leadership Kevin Kelly, CEO of Peaslee Tech, where Doris is on faculty, she's teaching leadership for our area manufacturers, shared with me that Doris is a fan favorite for that program. for our area manufacturers, shared with me that Doris is a fan favorite for that program. for our area manufacturers, shared with me that Doris is a fan favorite for that program. for our area manufacturers, shared with me that Doris is a fan favorite for that program. So that's a quote, yes. And Beyond appreciates the work that you do out at Peaslee Tech, So that's a quote, yes. And Beyond appreciates the work that you do out at Peaslee Tech, So that's a quote, yes. And Beyond appreciates the work that you do out at Peaslee Tech, So that's a quote, yes. And Beyond appreciates the work that you do out at Peaslee Tech, so thank you. I just want to say, your commitment and your advocacy for public education, and so thank you. I just want to say, your commitment and your advocacy for public education, and so thank you. I just want to say, your commitment and your advocacy for public education, and so thank you. I just want to say, your commitment and your advocacy for public education, and especially USD 497, she's already purchased her school supplies for her school of choice especially USD 497, she's already purchased her school supplies for her school of choice especially USD 497, she's already purchased her school supplies for her school of choice especially USD 497, she's already purchased her school supplies for her school of choice to support our schools, which is pretty impressive, and always being there and stepping up when to support our schools, which is pretty impressive, and always being there and stepping up when to support our schools, which is pretty impressive, and always being there and stepping up when to support our schools, which is pretty impressive, and always being there and stepping up when we need you. So thank you, and congratulations on your award. we need you. So thank you, and congratulations on your award. we need you. So thank you, and congratulations on your award. we need you. So thank you, and congratulations on your award.
When they called me on this, I was like, what? Really? But it's so good to be here When they called me on this, I was like, what? Really? But it's so good to be here When they called me on this, I was like, what? Really? But it's so good to be here When they called me on this, I was like, what? Really? But it's so good to be here today, or this evening. I appreciate all of USD 497, and all the familiar faces on today, or this evening. I appreciate all of USD 497, and all the familiar faces on today, or this evening. I appreciate all of USD 497, and all the familiar faces on today, or this evening. I appreciate all of USD 497, and all the familiar faces on the Board of Education and the media. I appreciate everyone here, and so grateful the Board of Education and the media. I appreciate everyone here, and so grateful the Board of Education and the media. I appreciate everyone here, and so grateful the Board of Education and the media. I appreciate everyone here, and so grateful for the award, because I was very, very surprised by it. So again, thank you for all you do for the award, because I was very, very surprised by it. So again, thank you for all you do for the award, because I was very, very surprised by it. So again, thank you for all you do for the award, because I was very, very surprised by it. So again, thank you for all you do for the school district, because you know what? We need you, just like you need us. for the school district, because you know what? We need you, just like you need us. for the school district, because you know what? We need you, just like you need us. for the school district, because you know what? We need you, just like you need us.
So those are very deserving award winners back there. And Drew will probably be grabbing So those are very deserving award winners back there. And Drew will probably be grabbing So those are very deserving award winners back there. And Drew will probably be grabbing So those are very deserving award winners back there. And Drew will probably be grabbing a photo, if you guys don't mind, of our Outstanding Service to Public Education Award a photo, if you guys don't mind, of our Outstanding Service to Public Education Award a photo, if you guys don't mind, of our Outstanding Service to Public Education Award 2025, and a photo, if you guys don't mind, of our Outstanding Service to Public Education Award 2025, and 2025, and our Outstanding Citizen Award 2025. Thank you. 2025, and our Outstanding Citizen Award 2025. Thank you. our Outstanding Citizen Award 2025. Thank you. our Outstanding Citizen Award 2025. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we have an executive session that we need to do. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have an executive session that we need to do. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have an executive session that we need to do. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have an executive session that we need to do. Can I get a motion for that, please? Can I get a motion for that, please? Can I get a motion for that, please? Can I get a motion for that, please?
I move the Board of Education recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing I move the Board of Education recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing I move the Board of Education recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing I move the Board of Education recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma, with Dr. Janice personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma, with Dr. Janice personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma, with Dr. Janice personnel matters pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma, with Dr. Janice Kerr Swift, Superintendent, Kristen Ryan, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources Kerr Swift, Superintendent, Kristen Ryan, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources Kerr Swift, Superintendent, Kristen Ryan, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources Kerr Swift, Superintendent, Kristen Ryan, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources and Employee Relations, and Larry Ingraham, Deputy Superintendent, invited to be present and Employee Relations, and Larry Ingraham, Deputy Superintendent, invited to be present and Employee Relations, and Larry Ingraham, Deputy Superintendent, invited to be present and Employee Relations, and Larry Ingraham, Deputy Superintendent, invited to be present and with the Board to return to open session in this room at, let's see, what time? and with the Board to return to open session in this room at, let's see, what time? and with the Board to return to open session in this room at, let's see, what time? and with the Board to return to open session in this room at, let's see, what time? 6:27, with action to follow. 6:27, with action to follow. 6:27, with action to follow. 6:27, with action to follow.
Second. 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 Cadoo Blackwood? Cadoo Blackwood? Cadoo Blackwood? Cadoo Blackwood?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Costello? 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 Franklin? 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 Franklin?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Gordon Ross? Gordon Ross? Gordon Ross? Gordon Ross?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Jones? 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 Jones?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Kimball? 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 Kimball?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Byers? 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 Byers?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Motion passes six zero. Motion passes six zero. Motion passes six zero.
from that executive session will take place on the consent agenda on item 2.10. So now we'll have the report from the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, and all those who are joining us, both in person and remote. We are here at the end of July, and we all know what that means. We're right down to these final three weeks before the start of school, really just two and a half weeks. So we're watching the countdown clock. It reads just 15 days. So that tells you everything you need to know. We are running fast to be well-prepared for the start of this upcoming 2025-26 school year. I just want to give a shout-out and a thank-you. Every morning when I come in, every night when I leave, folks are still working literally around the clock to meet the deadlines that are required so that we have our work ready, our schools and classrooms ready for students. We are hiring every day key positions across the district, and most importantly, teachers, as we gain on the task to ensure equality educator in front of every child in just 15 days. One highlight is Ms. Ryan met on Friday to exchange, Thursday or Friday, the end of the week last week, to exchange letters with our classified negotiations team. We are now referring to these individuals as ESP, Educational Support Professionals. And I am accustomed to that terminology from my past life, and I hope everyone will join us in using that new language. Next, just a reminder that right on our website, you can go to explore hiring. We are welcoming adding talent and commitment and a love for children. If you've got those things, we want to talk to you about how you can help us serve children. Now, it is that time of the year, August 1st through 13th. Ms. Ryan and her team are on it, and that is the time for benefits selection process. So everybody around, just it's time to remember that you can go online and update your benefits. If you need help, the team will have several labs open so that folks don't even have to worry about their own laptop. They can just stop in here and get the update done. We are using ParentSquare for our notifications engine on that work. I was really excited and found it rewarding last week to welcome Lisa Walker, who is an expert in Title IX in the state of Kansas and also happens to be the Assistant Superintendent of Federal Programs, including Title IX at KCKPS. She joined us last week and delivered really a beautiful Title IX training to our administrators. Now, members, we will hold a makeup session somewhere along in September. For all the folks who weren't able to make this training, I'll make sure you know those dates in case you're interested in joining. In addition to the training, we received updated systems, protocols, and forms to conduct initial screenings and submitting incident reports. This session was extremely high-quality. We received immediate positive feedback from principals who found the information and resources highly beneficial to their daily work in the field. We will be continuing throughout the year, members, as you already know, to refine and improve our district systems in alignment across several key areas, and specifically in Title IX. We do all of this work, holding as our top priority, student and staff safety. Title IX processes assist us and support us in ensuring safety for everyone in our system. We have lots of dates coming. I'll just keep this slide in front of you because it's hard to remember them all, but orientations coming through the end of July and the beginning of August. And then we look forward to administrative PD, all of our school and district leaders will be in this room tomorrow morning, starting at 8:00 a.m., and we'll be welcoming them. It's really three weeks and three waves, really the crescendo of the opening of 2025-26 tomorrow with our school and district leaders, and then on August 7th, welcoming our teachers. They will report to every school building in the district and open in a powerful session there. We will broadcast that brief greeting to our entire organization, but really preserve their time in the schools, which is what they've asked us for. And then the third wave, the most exciting, will welcome students on Wednesday, August 13th. Now, remember, a reminder for parents of Kinder, 6th, and 9th graders, a day ahead, preview of coming attractions. They can join us on the 12th for that great Welcome Back to School and Orientation Day to help them get accustomed to their new environment. School transitions can be challenging, and I appreciate that the board and our district have built in this extra day to ensure that our students new to the campus get the red carpet rolled out a day ahead of everyone else. It was such a delight last week for Andrew Bevan and I to get to meet Alex Kerr. If you've not heard about Alex, he is a Free State High School senior, and he is on the campaign trail running for Lawrence City Commission. It was truly inspiring to hear his story. I would recommend the podcast Andrew will be out later this week, and I would recommend that you jump in, whether you're going on a short drive or on the elliptical, whenever, just to hear Alex's story. He is inspiring. His commitment to public service, he started in public service at the age of 11, and it has been his priority, along with choir and theater and other school activities throughout these years. His thoughtful insights into the needs that he's heard about the Lawrence community, he's a very thoughtful leader, and his care for our local community. Alex is going places, and my win for the afternoon was that he agreed that if he doesn't make the primary, he will join the Student Advisory Group with me. So I am delighted to be the runner-up, and of course, we wish him all the best coming up on August 5th. CANS for the Community, you may have seen this, a volunteer-run organization that turns recycled aluminum cans into real impact. Their $1,000 donation to the Lawrence Schools Foundation in support of our school supply drive was matched by generous donor Beau Killow, bringing the total gift to $2,000. Thank you, CANS for the Community. We've talked about it every week of the summer, but I thought it was important to give a shout-out to Julie Henry and that incredible team over at Food and Nutrition Services. This is, by the numbers, the endeavor that they have undertaken this summer. According to their data, at nine different sites across Lawrence, our 2025 Summer Meal Service has packed, delivered, and served more than 51,000 breakfasts, 1,755 snacks, and 54,500 lunches. In case you've lost track, that's more than 105,000 meals served in support of our students and families this summer. I just want to thank members of the board who've been over there helping with the effort Tuesday over Tuesday. Thank everyone on our Food and Nutrition Team and all of our volunteers who make this a game-changer for students and families. Facilities and Operations, often their work is unnoticed, so we hold it up, and we give a big shout-out to Dr. Ingebrich, and Paula Marish is back there tonight, and all of our Facilities and Operations team. They are on a full-court press to make sure those buildings and classrooms are sparkling, the red carpet is rolled out, our welcome mat is out, and we're ready to open. Folks don't realize the massive amount of work that goes in to having our schools ready. I won't read you the list, it goes on and on. Thank you, Dr. Ingebrich. We have dates upcoming, I think I've touched on those already, and among those highlights, really one of the biggest highlights for me is the Back to School Lawrence Schools Foundation Kids Expo. That's coming up a week from this Saturday. Don't miss it, Saturday, August 9th, 2025. The full effort of a loving and welcoming and embracing Lawrence community channeled through the Lawrence Schools Foundation just makes the magic in this event. It's everything from haircuts to new shoes to backpacks to all manner of community organizations. This summer, members, I think you'll recall, our city, our police department, all of our support effort through the city and the county will also be represented, so all of the school affairs are coming together into one event. I can't imagine this property on that morning, I thought last year was pretty impressive, and we didn't have the second component of it then. So I thank you for the opportunity to share this report this evening. Our countdown clock, Andrew captured this today. It is counting down live on our website at our Back to School Countdown location, so if parents want to glance over there or help their children get even more excited about Back to School, we're down to 15 days, and every day we gain more excitement and enthusiasm around what matters most, and that is every single one of our 10,000 children who will show up that day and who are counting on us. So it is my great opportunity and honor to share this report and to serve the Lawrence Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. Moving on to the President of the Board of Education. I have just a couple of things. I was able to attend a Facilities Committee meeting, Shannon's going to report on that meeting. And then on Thursday, the 24th, I had the privilege to work with Facilities and Operations and Evergy to do some media related to Evergy's business energy savings program. That was a lot of fun. And then lastly, I just wanted to say that I was grateful to see the Department of Education reverse its decision and release congressionally appropriated federal grant money to the states. We are certainly grateful for the impact these funds will have on our students and staff, and we are also equally grateful for the impact they can have across the country and help schools provide the services and support that every student and staff member needs. And so that's what I have. So we'll continue on to committee reports. Who had a committee? I know Shannon did. Did anybody else have committees? Okay, all right, Shannon.
Great. Just a quick update, Policy Committee is not meeting in August. We will have our, yeah, not meeting in August, we will have our next meeting, September 23rd. The Facilities Committee met last week. We had a
We will be continuing throughout the year, members, as you already know, to refine and improve our district systems in alignment across several key areas, and specifically in Title IX. We do all of this work, holding as our top priority, student and staff safety. Title IX processes assist us and support us in ensuring safety for everyone in our system. We have lots of dates coming. I'll just keep this slide in front of you because it's hard to remember them all, but orientations coming through the end of July, in the beginning of August. And then we look forward to administrative PD, all of our school and district leaders will be in this room tomorrow morning, starting at 8:00 a.m., and we'll be welcoming them. It's really three weeks and three waves, really the crescendo of the opening of 2025-26, tomorrow with our school and district leaders. And then on August 7th, welcoming our teachers. They will report to every school building in the district and open in a powerful session there. We will broadcast that brief greeting to our entire organization, but really preserve their time in the schools, which is what they've asked us for. And then the third wave, the most exciting, will welcome students on Wednesday, August 13th. Now, remember, a reminder for parents of kinder, sixth, and ninth graders. A day ahead, preview of coming attractions. They can join us on the 12th for that great Welcome Back to School and Orientation Day to help them get accustomed to their new environment. School transitions can be challenging, and I appreciate that the board and our district have built in this extra day to ensure that our students new to the campus get the red carpet rolled out a day ahead of everyone else. It was such a delight last week for Andrew Bevan and I to get to meet Alex Kerr. If you've not heard about Alex, he is a Free State High School senior, and he is on the campaign trail, running for Lawrence City Commission. It was truly inspiring to hear his story. I would recommend the podcast Andrew will be out later this week, and I would recommend that you jump in, whether you're going on a short drive or on the elliptical, whenever, just to hear Alex's story. He is inspiring, his commitment to public service. He started in public service at the age of 11, and it has been his priority, along with choir and theater and other school activities throughout these years. His thoughtful insights into the needs that he's heard about the Lawrence community, he's a very thoughtful leader, and his care for our local community. Alex is going places, and my win for the afternoon was that he agreed that if he doesn't make the primary, he will join the Student Advisory Group with me. So I am delighted to be the runner-up, and of course, we wish him all the best coming up on August 5th. CANS for the Community, you may have seen this, a volunteer-run organization that turns recycled aluminum cans into real impact. Their $1,000 donation to the Lawrence Schools Foundation in support of our school supply drive was matched by generous donor Beau Killow, bringing the total gift to $2,000. Thank you, CANS for the Community. We've talked about it every week of the summer, but I thought it was important to give a shout-out to Julie Henry and that incredible team over at Food and Nutrition Services. This is, by the numbers, the endeavor that they have undertaken this summer. According to their data, at nine different sites across Lawrence, our 2025 Summer Meal Service has packed, delivered, and served more than 51,000 breakfasts, 1,755 snacks, and 54,500 lunches. In case you've lost track, that's more than 105,000 meals served in support of our students and families this summer. I just want to thank members of the board who've been over there, helping with the effort Tuesday over Tuesday. Thank everyone on our food and nutrition team and all of our volunteers who make this a game-changer for students and families. Facilities and Operations, often their work is unnoticed. So we hold it up, and we give a big shout-out to Dr. Engelbreit, and Paula Marish is back there tonight, and all of our Facilities and Operations team. They are on a full-court press to make sure those buildings and classrooms are sparkling, the red carpet is rolled out, our welcome mat is out, and we're ready to open. Folks don't realize the massive amount of work that goes in to having our schools ready. I won't read you the list, it goes on and on. Thank you, Dr. Engelbreit. We have dates upcoming, I think I've touched on those already. And among those highlights, really one of the biggest highlights for me is the Back to School Lawrence Schools Foundation Kids Expo. That's coming up a week from this Saturday. Don't miss it, Saturday, August 9th, 2025. The full effort of a loving and welcoming and embracing Lawrence community channeled through the Lawrence Schools Foundation just makes the magic in this event. It's everything from haircuts, to new shoes, to backpacks, to all manner of community organizations. This summer, members, I think you'll recall, our city, our police department, all of our support effort through the city and the county will also be represented. So all of the school affairs are coming together into one event. I can't imagine this property on that morning, I thought last year was pretty impressive, and we didn't have the second component of it then. So I thank you for the opportunity to share this report this evening. Our countdown clock, Andrew captured this today. It is counting down live on our website at our Back to School Countdown location. So if parents want to glance over there or help their children get even more excited about Back to School, we're down to 15 days. And every day, we gain more excitement and enthusiasm around what matters most, and that is every single one of our 10,000 children who will show up that day and who are counting on us. So it is my great opportunity and honor to share this report and to serve the Lawrence Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. Moving on to the President of the Board of Education. I have just a couple things. I was able to attend a Facilities Committee meeting. Shannon's going to report on that meeting. And then on Thursday, the 24th, I had the privilege to work with Facilities and Operations and Evergy to do some media related to Evergy's Business Energy Savings Program. That was a lot of fun. And then lastly, I just wanted to say that I was grateful to see the Department of Education reverse its decision and release congressionally appropriated federal grant money to the states. We are certainly grateful for the impact these funds will have on our students and staff, and we are also equally grateful for the impact they can have across the country and help schools provide the services and support that every student and staff member needs. And so that's what I have. So we'll continue on to committee reports. Who had a committee? I know Shannon did. Did anybody else have committees? Okay, all right, Shannon.
Great, just a quick update. Policy Committee is not meeting in August. We will have our, yeah, not meeting in August. We will have our next meeting September 23rd. The Facilities Committee met last week. We had an update on the summer projects, which Dr. Swift touched on. There's quite a bit going on to get everything ready to go, including concrete work at Sunflower Elementary that may be extending somewhat into the school year. Solar panels are going on at Sunflower Elementary, which is very exciting. We will soon have our second solar installation done there. I know that everybody has heard a little bit about the street construction in Lawrence. The water main replacement project along 19th Street is likely to have some impacts on our back-to-school traffic, so just wanted to give a heads-up about that. In addition, we learned that in June, our facilities hosted 895 events in the middle of summer. That's, our buildings are very, very busy all year round. And in fact, the year-to-date numbers for fiscal year '25, we held 14,716 events in our school facilities. We are a district that is open to and welcomes our community into our buildings and to a great extent, so I was very interested to see that data. Our software that we have been using in Facilities and Operations has allowed us to better schedule, track, and bill for all of those events, as well as tracking maintenance work orders and allowing us to see improving metrics for on-time completion of all of our maintenance work orders. The board recently approved our renewal for our property and casualty insurance. It ended up coming in just a little bit more than anticipated, so $1,415,000 for that premium for this upcoming year. I just wanted to note or remind board members that six or seven years ago, that number was only $300,000 a year. That is one of our expenses that has increased substantially and much more rapidly than inflation over the years. We may be having a Neighborhood Revitalization Act request come to the board. I'm trying to find out some more information about where it is in the process, but Nine Dell Two, which is a project that Tony Kirschnik is doing in East Lawrence, may come to us for consideration of that Neighborhood Revitalization Act request. There are a number of items on consent this evening from Facilities and Operations as well. And then the last thing, and I wanted to make sure it's okay for me to share this. I'll share it anyway because I think it's really, really cool. So we have some property in the district that we need a clear brush from, and our Facilities and Operations has considered a number of ways to do this. It's the lot that's right next to Langston Hughes. So if you see a herd of goats on that property this fall, they are supposed to be there, they will be very well cared for. We are working with a farmer who provides this service to landowners when they need to have very thick brush cleared from their property. And it is the most efficient way for us to address this situation. And I appreciate our staff for thinking creatively about how we could do this in a responsible way, because it's really important for safety on that property and being good neighbors in our community. So that's the report from the Facilities Committee.
We'll do, I'm getting there? We'll just start down at that end.
Board members, okay, I don't have a lot. I just want to remind board members about a couple of upcoming things. State Board of Education will be meeting August 12th and 13th. At the August 12th date, that is when they are going to finalize their work to set the cut scores for the Kansas assessments that were administered in the spring of this year and going forward for this testing cycle. So that's going to be a really important vote by the State Board, and I hope that you will keep an eye on the work that they're doing there. The Education Funding Task Force meets again on Wednesday, August 13th, and Thursday, August 14th. No agenda has been issued for that committee, but according to the chair at last month's meeting, I expect that that day and a half will be fully focused on special education funding in Kansas. There's a couple of brief updates on some of the things I mentioned two weeks ago about federal issues. As GR and Dr. Swift have noted in Anassa Community, the funds, the federal funds that had been impounded by Office of Management and Budget and U.S. Department of Education were released late on Friday. I do want to caution everyone that we still need to be watching that situation very carefully because they are releasing and distributing the funds, but there is still some talk about some sort of rescission bill and a procedure that they're calling pocket rescissions that the Office of Management and Budget is wanting to use. And there are other K-12 funds that were not impacted by the impoundment that could then be subject to these other processes. So that's one thing to watch. The other thing to watch is that the U.S. Senate Committee on Appropriations is going to begin considering federal department budgets for fiscal year 2026. The President's budget slashes $12 billion from K-12 public education funding. So that is the budget that they're going to start working on. The first hearing of that committee is this Thursday morning at 8:30 a.m. Central Time, Thursday, July 31st. And Kansas's own Senator Jerry Moran serves on that committee, so there is an opportunity for Kansans' voices to be heard in that process, and I would encourage you to take advantage of that. And then the immigration status interpretive rule that I mentioned a couple weeks ago, that's the interpretation that U.S. Department of Education is saying they are going to take on participation in programs like Head Start, Pell Grants, some dual enrollment funding, and adult education. There was a lawsuit filed right after that rule was announced in Rhode Island, about 20 states participating in it. They have entered an agreement to pause enforcement of that rule, but only in the 20 states that sued. So Kansas was not one of the states that was a party to that litigation. But that continues to be a concern, especially for a district like ours, that we run our adult education program for our community. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that development. Thank you.
Kelly? Rhonda? Carol?
Okay, yes, I would just like to thank and congratulate Denise Johnson and the folks from Ren Lawrence and Doris Ricks for their considerable contributions to Lawrence Schools. Let's see, on July 17th, I attended the Darkness to Light Stewards of Children Sexual Abuse Prevention Training, sponsored by the Kansas Children's Service League, and I also was able to earn 2.5 CEUs towards my social work licensure. So if anybody's looking for that, they can go there as well. But the training was excellent. It teaches one to be a better informed bystander or how to prevent and recognize and recognize child sexual abuse. Let's see. And I also was able, participated in the meal distribution along with school board candidate Molly Starr, who's here in attendance. And I'd like to thank her for her time and efforts. And for those who are interested, the school district has created the School Nutrition Meal Support Fund, and that can be found on our website. This is designated for students and families experiencing financial hardship. Money donated to the Meal Support Fund may be used only for negative account balances. The School Nutrition Meal Support Fund Committee will designate how to distribute the donations, noting that MSF transfer in the account remarks. Donors contributing more than $250 or upon request will receive a charitable contribution acknowledgement for their generous donation. And I'd like to thank GR, my colleagues, board colleagues, GR Ross and Shelley Kimball for bringing up the release of the federal funds and also talking about immigration. And it also ties into what's been on my mind a lot lately, you know, focusing on immigration and what's happening to our neighbors just to the northeast here in Fort Leavenworth. And for those who are not well-versed in Kansas history, because I don't know if this part is taught in Kansas history, but in 1832, that land where the Fort Leavenworth is, that was actually on our treaty land, the Kickapoo Tribe in Kansas, that big swath of land, that was our treaty land. And so Fort Leavenworth was formerly, it was first recognized as Kickapoo City. And so to me, you know, it just confounds me that people are being deported on, you know, stolen land. In my mind, nobody is illegal on stolen land, period. And to that end, yeah, I just, my thoughts, you know, a lot of my thoughts are on the residents and everybody in our community that may be impacted by immigration. And also, if, you know, there's some time here before school starts. If anybody's interested, you can actually see the cannon that was at Fort Leavenworth that was positioned towards the west. It was pointed at Missouri because that town fought against slavery, and that cannon can be seen at the Kansas Historical Museum. And lastly, I would like to remind folks, if you haven't already, turn in your reading list. The reading program for the Lawrence Public Library ends on August 16th. Thank you.
Bob, do you have any?
All right, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. So a couple things before we move forward with the consent agenda. So I am going to pull Item 2.16, the Personnel Report. I have a non-familiar relationship with a person listed on the Personnel Report, so I need to pull that so it can be voted on separately because I'm going to declare a conflict of interest with that report.
And I'm going to pull 2.14.
Okay.
Do you want me to make the motion?
2.14 is also going to be pulled, the Schedule of Fees. So that's two items. Does anybody else have anything that they need to pull? Okay, all right, so I'll go ahead and make the motion then. I move the Board of Education to adopt the items listed on the consent agenda with the exception of Items 2.14 and 2.16, which will be discussed and voted on separately in new business.
All right, second.
Costello? Franklin?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Couldu Blackwood?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
All right, my mic didn't go. I vote yes.
Ann Costello?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the first item of new business, Item 4.1.
Very good. 4.1, we have some great news. Ms. Kristen Ryan and her partners from LEA are coming. Members, I just want to share my deep gratitude for the work of this team, everyone who was at the table, and everyone who supported that effort at the table. I want to thank you for the diligence. These are hard days, and our process, although we are all committed, deeply committed, our processes are not easy because these are hard times. And I just want to appreciate, to me, the fact that we can innovate in difficult times means we will stay the course to continue to innovate, to see better days ahead. And I just want you to continue to know that you have the commitment of this superintendent and my entire team to continue that work so that we can get to a better place in the future. That is among our highest priorities, and of course, the board feels that way as well. I want to thank the board members who served on the team lots of hours at night when you could be with your family or doing something else. And so coming forward, you all are going to share all of the detailed information. And we just want to thank everyone involved and wish you a wonderful school year. If we can do this, we will do lots of other great things together as well. Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
So thank you, Dr. Swift, and I have with me tonight Josh Spradlin and Sarah Rosillian, co-chairs. And so this is the team. Again, thank you, board members, and our entire team that is spending a lot of time throughout the school year. We really appreciate their flexibility and their willingness to serve. And anytime we want or need to schedule something, they're there. So thank you to our entire team. So tonight, our goal is, we're going to just share high level what's proposed for the vote tonight to approve the agreement for certified staff. For me, I just want to say, what Dr. Swift was saying about innovation, one of the main articles that we spent a lot of time on this year was increasing plan time and just the why behind that. And we've been up here at least the last four years talking about increasing plan time. And from our epic data, that was a retention factor for our staff. And so we made some big strides this year. It's not perfect, but we made a big impact K-12, so it's not just the middle school in terms of having more plan time. So that's pretty exciting. I think high level, too, what I want to share is we were able to give a 3.162% increase, and that gave every certified staff member $800 on the base, so an $800 raise, and also honoring both vertical and horizontal movement. So for their years of service in district, and then also all of the good that they're doing for continuing their craft and their profession. With that, Josh and Sarah, you want to?
And Ms. Ryan, before they come, I'm remiss. I should say their names aloud. Member Byers, Franklin, and President Gordon Ross were at the table, and I just want to thank them for their work.
For sure, thank you.
Hello, Josh Spradlin. I teach science at LMCMS and also a co-chair on negotiations. So I'm going to hit some of the main points in terms of salary and some of the other things that we hit. Sarah will kind of focus a lot on the plan time aspect. So like what Kristen was saying, we were able to add a little over $1.6 million to our compensation. $800 of that went to each cell on our salary matrix. We also include in that the a little over $1,200 increase in our fringe benefit for medical coverage. We had a, we continued a $75 a month retirement account in a 403B. We also had some additional changes in some of our stipends under additional assignments, including an increase of $4,500 for school sites and some increases just based off of the market with fellow districts in terms of some of our coaching positions and things like that. We also were able to agree to a better way of how certain staff members can move horizontally on our matrix, including continuing education credits. So nurses, for instance, didn't really have a great way to move horizontally, and so we were able to come to agreement with that. That's kind of the high-level stuff in terms of salary. Sarah, do you want to?
Sarah Rosillian, I'm over at Prairie Park. And so plan time actually is at least a decade in the making because we have records of committees and proposals and things, and it's been a challenge for, so this is a really exciting step towards what could be. So, let's see. So to kind of align it, making the plan time changes also helps kind of align our calendar. So we are, because the district goal that was expressed at the table is that we are looking at ourselves as an early childhood through secondary. And so how can we best do that and then meet the needs of our families and things like that? So with plan time, we've increased it at the elementary and the high school level. The middle school already was operating with two plan times, one that was more professional team plan because of the middle school model. And then so accomplishing that at elementary with Dr. Swift's addition of some of our new specialists, and then at the high school with them changing to five of seven, their teaching instead of six of seven, that will help create that time for plan time. Let's see. And all the details are in the agenda item 4.1, and it lists out very specifically more of what we're doing. And then, oops, sorry, this side. So there will be a little bit of a change with work here, the duty day. And I'm forgetting something, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, and so because there will be unforeseen things that we, that may possibly come up with plan time or any of those changes that we have made, we have added in a reopener clause so that we can go back in and address those needs in a very timely manner as opposed to having to wait, so.
And Josh is going to share the priority as we move into this next school year, our goals and our number-one priority. But I also just wanted to thank the team and the board for the continued commitment of paying the full single health insurance. So that is, there was a significant increase regarding that, and we still made that happen, which is almost a $10,000 benefit.
So, as far as moving into next year, with how this year kind of unfolded, we had kind of two big priorities. One was increasing plan time, one was increasing salary. When we kind of got the go-ahead to really pursue doing double plans at each level, not going to lie, that kind of consumed a lot of our time, making sure that the language worked out and trying to think about everything that kind of might come up. And so, one of the things that we're still, I've mentioned up here before, is that we're still working on salary, and that will kind of be our main focus for next year. While we were able to do the $800, it's still, as I again have shown you, we're behind some of our fellow districts around us. And so, we're really going to aim to focus and put that onto the table early, and hopefully, much like we did a few years ago, really plan throughout the year and not kind of wait until we get kind of our number from the state. And so, that will kind of be our major focus, plus kind of like with what Sarah said, looking at, you know, what comes up with some of the changes that we made, we'll be able to act kind of quickly. But definitely trying to get ourselves back up to a competitive spot. You know, three years ago, when we kind of made that change, or two years ago, we were more competitive. And, and as these last two years have kind of gone along, we have fallen back a little bit. And so, really kind of focusing on that. So, we did some very kind of creative things in the Salary Subcommittee, kind of looking at how we can do things to increase the base, and really kind of see how we can, where we can place things. But the truth is, as we kind of look at it, while yes, our base amount is low, if you look at another cell, it's low there, if not even further behind. But again, with trying to get through these two main goals of increasing plan time, looking at salary, we feel really good that we were able to accomplish that one this year. Now, it's just moving on to the next one. So.
Anything else? Okay.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Y'all stay.
Questions? Comments? Kelly?
So, I just want to observe a couple of things. One, I think that LEA really held their ground with the second plan in the middle school level a year ago, and that's what set us up for the, our ability to really prioritize the second plan at the elementary and high school level. So, that, that interspersed bargaining, having been at the table during that year, really the focus on the integrity of the contract shows us what can happen in subsequent years when we are very strategic about priorities. And in this case, you've named the base salary, and I just want to say for my board colleagues, I know are well aware of this, but just wanting to name that some of our most competitive wages to the, where are they all at, east, are closer to $50,000 to start. So, if you are a teacher coming off the hill here in Lawrence, and you can make a decision to come to USC 497, or you can make a decision to go to ALATHA, and I would like the board to focus on getting us to a place where we retain the, we retain the teachers we're educating here in town, both at KU and Haskell. And then, I wanted to note that Josh used the phrase "based on the market" to talk about how we pay our coaches competitively. That is probably a phrase we should be using when we are talking about our teachers' salaries as well. If we did a market analysis, we would, as you've pointed out, find that we are behind. And I want to be able to support the HR department and your efforts to recruit and retain educators. So, when we look at the strategic plan that we'll be doing in the next upcoming year, I do think it's reasonable to say that $50,000 or something that the committee determines to be a reasonable goal, might be something to look at. And just to, just to say to the community that I understand that to be something around $6 million, is that correct? So, we all will remember that the very rough year we had getting to $6 million. So, the word innovate is incredibly important because we don't want to see class sizes balloon or people lose the win that they get with the plan time by trying to offset wages. So, I hope that the subtext of the strategic planning as it relates to recruitment and retention really focuses on what you all looked at in the matrix, the Subcommittee, but also just looking at possibility for a multi-year commitment to the union, so that might be something like a two-year contract, for example. So, thank you.
Somebody else wants to go next? That's okay. Okay. Thank you. I am really, really pleased to be able to support this ratification tonight. As you mentioned, there are things that we have been working on as long-term goals, really long-term goals for some of them, like the plan time. And I know that salary is one of those long-term goals that I personally share as a board member. You know, we, we've made some progress. I'm really encouraged by a lot of the non-wage things that you all have done in the contract. I think it's very student and family-centered. For example, the changes to plan time, allowing us to have better alignment of our calendars. I think that's a real win for our families, so I appreciate that work. I know that's not easy to do, especially when you're used to doing it a particular way, and now we're going to change it, but I think it's, I think that's great. That's, that's good for our families and students. I think it's good for, for our staff as well. But, and I'm, and I'm really pleased that we were able to put money on the base. There have been years that I have been a board member that we cannot put, we put zero on the base because we simply could not figure out how to get it done. And so, and during some really trying financial times with the state. So, this is truly a step in the right direction. But I agree with my board colleague, we have significant work still to do in that regard. Just looking at what market data is available out there, you're absolutely right. We have, we have to make progress. We, I want us to eventually be a competitive and leading district in keeping our top-tier educators and attracting new educators to our community. So, we have to continue to push on this work in a sustainable way, and I, and I think that is, is a statement of our values and what we value in terms of what we want for our students and what we want for our staff. So, thank you all. I really appreciate the interspersed bargaining process. I think that the contracts that we have been able to approve since we moved to that process have been better for our staff. At least, that's how it appears from where I sit. And I think that, that it's a more constructive and thoughtful and goal-oriented process that leads us to a better place. I know it's really time-intensive, so for the, for those of you who serve on that committee, staff, administration, and for my board colleagues who have taken on that task, much gratitude. So, thank you.
Yolanda? Anybody else have anything? Bob?
Yeah. My, I have two points, and you know me, I always have one or two extra to say. One, I, I have had the pleasure of doing both, both types of negotiations because I, back in my first tenure on the board, we just did, I don't know what you call it?
Traditional.
Traditional. I called it something else at the time, but, but I have very much enjoyed the, the current bargaining process because actually, it's more of a collegial discussion. I, I really enjoy how we look at different issues and as a group, discuss them and come up with solutions. My other point, though, has to do with how, I want the community to understand that when we talk about raising salaries, it's more than just a discussion about, for me, more than just discussion about if we had the money. The issue here really is how do we innovate internally to the district around our programming in order to be able to save money and raise salaries? So, so, you know, the thing with schools that people don't necessarily always understand is that it's really about enrollment. It's really about the money we spend on other things. So, part of this zeal, that zeal that we have to wanting to help raise salaries for our teachers and our staff, we have to understand that in order to do so, what we have to do is increase enrollment if possible and cut not necessarily programs or people, but figure out how we can better serve our public with less cost in order to apply those dollars elsewhere. Just for education, I think a lot of people see it as a magic thing, and we have, we can just say, here's money. The reality is, we have a finite amount of money, and we get that money based on certain things. And we need to understand in order to move forward with doing what I personally think is right for teachers and the staff. We've got to be more innovative around programming in order to save.
I would, I would just add to that, that one of the things that we really talk about when we go out and talk to staff is that, you know, for someone who's getting 700 or $800 on their cell, by the time, we understand by the time taxes gets taken out and everything, maybe 50 bucks a paycheck. I get it. But that's not it. Also, one of the things that, you mentioned innovating, and I know we've started to have some early discussions, a lot of the money that was available went into a 15% increase in fringe, right off the bat. And so, looking at what we can do there is something that can be innovative. And so, but when we talk about it to staff, we include the fact, it's not just the $800 per cell, it's the $1,262 that went to fringe, it's the $75 a month that goes to. So, they do add up, and so, just something that, as, you know, as we're talking about it, we, we understand that it is more than just that. You know, of the 1.6 million that we put into salary this year, 900,000 of it instantly goes into movement, so people can move for their years and for their training. And so, it is something that, that we also communicate that out, and that hopefully can help with kind of bridging that gap of where that money kind of goes.
Ann, do you have anything?
Can I add one more thing?
No, I don't. Thank you.
You know, I would just add, I would just echo a lot of the sentiments of my board colleagues that, you know, doing this work that I've done, I think I've been on negotiations every year but one, that it, it's a, it's a great process, and we've certainly been able to accomplish a lot. But, you know, that, that doesn't mean the work is done. And what I like about the IBB process is that it has, it has taught all of us that the work never ends. And that's, that's our mindset as we do it, is that, that, that we, that we check a box, and then we just replace that box with another box, and we just keep moving forward. And the, the work of the Salary Subcommittee that we've done this year has been, has, it's been a lot of fun. It's, it's really been fun because Josh and I like spreadsheets, and we like numbers, and we like to play with stuff like that. But it's, it's been, it's been innovative from the standpoint of seeing ways that, that, seeing the innovation from that side of different ways that we can, different paths that we could possibly take to get to the same goal as opposed to the one or two paths that, that always existed in the, in the, in the past. And so, that, that work has been rewarding as, as well. So, it's been, it's been good, and I look forward to continuing the work, continuing the work with you all as we move forward to, to meet these goals together.
I was just going to give a shout-out to, there, sometimes we'll get the question of, well, what can we do to help? Like, I don't want to do help. So, if you can, if people can help elect education-friendly candidates, we have elections coming up. If you can contact senators, representatives, if you can join us at the State House to advocate for fully funding special ed, because those dollars that go to, that we use to make up the gap are things that could be going to salaries and other things to address class size and programming and all sorts of great things. So, there are things that people can do. So, join us.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education approved a tentative agreement with certified employees. The certified salary pool will receive a 3.162% increase totaling $1,678,001 total, approximately which includes a $800 increase to the base as well as horizontal and vertical movements.
I second.
Franklin?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Cudhu Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
If you refresh your agenda, you'll see the two new items under new business. First one is 4.2 Personnel Report, so I'm declaring a conflict of interest, and I'm going to turn this vote over to Vice President Byers.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion of the item?
Motion?
Any?
No.
Okay. I need a motion?
I move, this is Carol.
I think we have to read that one now.
Okay.
Okay. This is Carol. I move the Board of Education approve the July 28, 2025 Personnel Report as attached.
Second.
And moved and seconded?
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Cudhu Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
to Dr. Swift.
Thank you, President Gordon Ross and members of the board. I just wanted to acknowledge this evening that our work represented in this HR hiring this evening is really focused, continues to be focused, as our partners at LEA noted, on streamlining the organization. And that streamlining really includes better aligning our teams. And so, that is occurring tonight in direct response to the patterns that our community and our staff directly shared with us over fall, to improve alignment of our communications, both at the district level, which we've traditionally done, but now in the addition of a coordinator position to align school communications efforts and school outreach, as well as an additional focus on student and staff safety and responsiveness. We feel like we understand the assignment from our community, and these individuals will align that work for us. I won't read the press release. Members, you have it. It'll be out in the community shortly. Andrew Bevan is. Andrew Bevan is sending it out. But we welcome Jake Potter, who brings 15 years of communications experience. He is a communications pro and he will serve our community well. And then secondly, Ms. Summer Workman, who really hails from Lawrence, she is a Lawrence alum and shares openly that she was inspired to choose communications as a high school student by the work of Julie Boyle, so a long time ago. And she holds both that work around community and school communications alignment. And that's kind of a newer area that we're expanding into to better support our parents, our students and our staff with what they directly told us. So I thank you, Board, for your support. My hope and my belief is that our stakeholders will see a difference from day one. And you will see the org chart this evening, but Mr. Andrew Bevan, who has given so much to this district in multimedia, will serve as a coordinator right alongside Summer Workman as a coordinator. They will do that work and then Jake Potter will lead that team. So thank you and I appreciate the opportunity to share.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item 4.3, Schedule of Fees.
I just wanted to have a board discussion. We discussed the preschool rate at a spring meeting, but I wanted to note the timing that it takes for us to make that determination of the rate. It's a bit late in the academic year and it's certainly not for young families ideal in terms of the timing of when we make those adjustments. So I would ask my board colleagues, and I just want to say, I want to acknowledge, one, the rate is comparatively low, is my understanding when looking at the rest of Lawrence. However, it doesn't necessarily have the same hours as some other spaces for, when one considers both the preschool component but also the childcare component when you have people that are under five. So I'm asking at this time that we consider, that the board consider directing that we set a rate earlier in the year. So I know, my understanding is we, we are waiting because we want to make sure that we're, that it is, it is, cost is what we are, we're only doing it at cost, correct?
At cost, yes.
Yeah. So I would ask that we set the rate early in the year for families to be able to plan. And if you have to, if you can adjust downward.
Later.
You know, amen to that. But that you would not be able to adjust upward. So that, that it would be something we would have to do proactively to account for costs that we thought might exceed whatever it is this year and in the subsequent year. Does that make sense?
Very much so. And if the board is in agreement, I already spoke with Ms. Frick this afternoon, who enthusiastically embraced that approach, if, if you all are willing. Frank.
Is that agreeable? Yeah. Okay. So that would mean for next year, we would be, and especially as we're working to expand the early childhood education offerings, which is part of our equity work, or we've identified that as being a critical component of our mission, we could then expect that, I don't know if it's January, but that the ELT would come back and say, we think this is a reasonable time to set that rate, we'll communicate it to families then. And then we wouldn't expect it to do anything but go down after that point. So is it possible for you all to come back at the next board meeting or, or maybe the subsequent one after that to tell us this is when we think we could make that?
Prelimarily, they really liked your, your suggestion of January. It's when folks begin to think about enrollment for the following year, it's kind of a natural time. So we're good with that. But, but we will have the discussion. I appreciate that opportunity.
And that, that's just the discussion I wanted to have. I don't know if anybody else wanted to jump in.
Thank you. That's brilliant.
I appreciate the suggestion and also just want to reiterate that our New York Montessori families did, all except one family that made another choice, they returned those agreements before the end of school. So we, we, not trying to say that it's easy for an increase, that's never easy, but I do appreciate that folks made their vote and let us know back in May that they were going to return. So.
And at that, just to be clear, at that time in May, we talked to them about the rate increase.
Yes, and that was represented in the agreement they signed.
So they're not finding out tonight, correct? Thank you.
Exactly. Many in our community are finding out around now, but our parents involved had that.
Yeah.
Yes.
And will be able to do it even earlier in the next year.
That's our goal and also at our satellite elementary locations, right now Woodlawn and Sunflower, we want to do a better job there. It's a little more complicated. And of course Kennedy is a pro at this. They've been doing it forever, so.
Okay. All right. Without anything else, Sarah motion?
I can make the motion. Let's see. I move the Board of Education approve the schedule of fees for the 2025-26 school year as attached.
I second.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Cidiu Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. All right. Move on to item 5.1, Annual Needs Assessment. Dr. Swift?
Thank you, President Gordon Ross and members of the board. We welcome the opportunity to connect the dots in our work between the feedback from school teams, building leadership teams and principals, taking that feedback and really integrating that into our next steps. And Board, you're familiar with the needs, annual needs assessment process, and that is the goal of that process, is to connect the dots between the needs we witness in buildings, our experience there, and the budget and board decisions and district work. We want to bring all of that together. So you'll notice, and I appreciated member Costello and other members of the board raising questions over the weekend, you'll notice that we've done a lot of work to streamline this information because sometimes when it's too much, we kind of lose the thread. So we've done some work to streamline without losing any of the value of the feedback from building leadership teams across the district. So Mr. Polk is here and I do want to give a shout out to Dr. Colamaya, who has walked with us over the previous couple of weeks to get us over the finish line this evening. And Mr. Polk is going to take us through. And then, of course, we look forward to questions and the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for having me tonight. I am James Polk, Director of Data and Assessment for the District. So just to give you a little bit of background for this, this is a state required report that all districts have to give to their board. It is something that is to promote transparency. So after we present tonight, it will not only be on board docs but also be live on our website. This assessment is designed to give you firsthand feedback from our teachers, teachers, leaders and building leaders to directly inform your work of the board. All 20 of our buildings participated in this needs assessment. They reviewed the structures that we have in place, rows, capacities, student barriers and other budget recommendations. And so you'll see that captured in the presentation as well as the board enclosure. And so we'll go through the results. You'll notice that on a lot of the questions that we have tonight, it's on a one to four implementation scale. So a one would mean that that structure is not in place. A two would mean that it's emerging, so some of it is there, but it's inconsistent. Three would mean it's operational, so it's consistently implemented throughout the building. And four means it's fully implemented. So not only is it implemented, but it's systematic, it's sustainable and it's data driven. So our first thing that we're looking at are our structures. These are our core systems and frameworks and conditions that support the building's ability to function effectively and equitably. And there are seven different components here. On the next slide, I highlight some of our glows and grows for this. Tiered systems of support, social emotional learning, mental health integration and professional learning and collaboration, all scored higher than a 3.0 average, which means across our 20 buildings, they feel that these are operational or fully implemented, so they are sustainable and data driven. Our grow is that our kindergarten readiness and early learning scored an average of 2.75, meaning it's emerging. And I want to note that that specific score, 2.75, is just feedback from our elementary buildings and excludes our secondaries because they don't have kindergartners. Our next piece of data looks at progress towards building goals. So last summer in, in 2024, our buildings came together with their leadership teams and they made over 40 goals, so two goals per building. And as they filled out their need assessment this spring on their progress towards those goals, our buildings determined that 85% of their goals were either operational or fully implemented. So that means that they made terrific progress this year towards achieving those goals and putting them in place. And again, that's on that one to four implementation scale where they feel that those things are consistently implemented throughout their building and/or sustainable and data driven. Our next component that we're going to look at are principles of learning. So these are the four Rs of relationship, relevance, responsive culture and results. And these are the core beliefs of research-based understandings of how our students learn best. And so our building leadership teams and teacher leaders came together to determine how they feel like they're doing with these four components inside of their building as far as implementing them. And as we look at our glows and grows on our next slide, you'll notice that relationships, relevance and responsive culture all averaged a score of 3.0 or higher, meaning those are operational or fully implemented, whereas results scored a 2.95 average score, meaning it is still emerging as we look to continue to find ways to improve our systems. Another really valuable component that I want to highlight of the needs assessment are identifying barriers inside of our buildings. So what is stopping our progress towards students achieving levels three and four on our state assessments? So we put those into different buckets for you here as we took the feedback from the buildings and we identified student behavior, SEL and mental health, attendance and staff shortages, all as barriers to achieving those goals. And you'll see if you look at some of the insights, there are some common threads woven throughout these. You'll see things like system level solutions with consistency and fidelity. You'll see things like strengthening family engagement and community engagement. You'll also see things like professional development, educating our staff on how to meet behavioral needs of students or continue to grow their capacity. And so as we look at the results of this needs assessment, we have lots of next steps. We want to thank the 200 staff members or so that participated in this with their building principals. We want to make sure that we're publishing this document on our state, on our district website. And we want to continue to reflect on the work that we're doing and how these results align with the decisions we're making and the plan of action as we move forward.
As Mr. Polk wraps, I will also note that beginning tomorrow, our work this fall with principals will be to update their goals. They gave those goals last spring, but to update their goals based on what we know now. So this, this will be a good time.
Thank you, Mr. Polk. Thank you, Dr. Swift, for doing this work, even though it is a process that is required by state statute. I do think that there is important value in hearing from our staff in a more direct way through this process. And I feel like you have built a process that follows the directive of the board that we want to have staff at the building level involved in providing input and have that input shared with the board so that we can be better informed in making our budget decisions, which ultimately is what statutorily this process is supposed to be about. So, you know, every year that we've done this, I always read the assessment and I read the feedback from the buildings. And I'm always struck that there seems to be some commonalities in the things that they are identifying as needs and barriers. But, and you started to touch on this, Mr. Polk, in, in your last comments, but, you know, kind of that thread of consistency and fidelity, professional development, is, what do you see as kind of the single most important thing that our district needs or our staff needs in terms of helping us to more fully support them in overcoming those barriers?
Yeah, I think the commonality that stood out to me as I read through the comments from the buildings was that word, consistency and clarity. As we continue to move forward with, with our mission and vision and, and, you know, achievement with our students, I think creating that clarity for not only our building leaders but also our teachers in our classrooms. So we know not just what needs to be taught, but what are the components of effective instruction and how they're going to teach it. And I could definitely see common themes throughout the, the reports in that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that answer. With that in mind, maybe you and/or Dr. Swift can help the board, just because one of the things we have to do with this is when we have our budget hearing and we get ready to approve our budget, we have to make findings as a board, that we have reviewed this information and we are using it to inform our budget decisions. So, you know, are there particular steps that we've already taken this year in that regard that will align our budget work with those needs that have been identified? Or are there steps that you, you can easily identify for the board tonight or at that meeting where we have to make the findings to say, these are the steps that we're going to be taking throughout the fall that align our budget work with the priorities that have been identified and the barriers that have been identified?
I really appreciate that question, member Kimball, and the, our entire focus on the streamlining of the organization in order to direct every resource possible in direct support of classrooms and schools, that, that's the, that's the main thing with regard to aligning as much as we can to specifically address the needs. The, the other side of that coin is our continuing advocacy that we fully fund special education and that we fully fund the education of our young people so that we can, and I appreciated Josh and Sarah's remarks, but that's not just talk. Those are our needs in terms of putting a quality teacher in front of every child and ensuring, I loved the words, ensuring that they are paid market. And we all know our market is not what it should be generally in this country, but even getting to that 50,000 mark so that we're able to fully staff and direct the resource to, directly to children in their needs.
Thank you for that. As I know everyone has probably tired of hearing me say that, that gap in sped funding last year was $14 million. So if you think about what my board colleague Kelly said about how hard we worked when we had to find $6 million in our budget, that $14 million that the state and federal government are not providing to us to pay for those services would be a game changer in that regard. And it means we are taking $14 million away from our general operational funds, which are the dollars that would need to be directed to each and every one of these barriers that our staff have identified. And that is a legislative decision to not give us that money every single year for the needs of our students. So I just, I wanted to make that point, but I really appreciate the way that you framed it in terms of consistency, clarity, training, streamlining our resources. that you framed it in terms of consistency, clarity, training, streamlining our resources. That is how we do the budget work. Something else I just want to highlight, and then I'll step off my soapbox, is that one of the components that allows us to go as far as we do right now in meeting those needs is our community's historic and continuing support for this board, fully levying the full amount of dollars that we are authorized to levy under state law for our local option budget. I know that property taxes are a really important issue for everyone, everyone in this room, everyone in our community. But at the same time, it is those local property tax dollars that have helped us protect the advances that we have been able to make in these areas in supporting our teachers and our education support professionals. So just that, being able to approve that budget every year with that 33% of LOB authority is a really important thing that our board does have control over with the support of our community in meeting those barriers. So just wanted to say a quick thank you and to our community for allowing us to continue doing that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes. Can you please turn to slide 11? This is Carol. And I'm looking at the Rose capacities, and I'm specifically looking at the two standards here. Do students receive support for physical and mental wellness? And the one beneath it, do students engage in the arts and cultural appreciation? Well, I see, that's slide 11?
Did you want to do the other?
No, slide 11. I think we have different slides. It says Rose capacities. There you go. So those two paragraphs are, to me, I'm a social worker here, and I think my colleagues here would agree that those two are interconnected, and we see where we are lacking and where we can improve. And I'm thinking specifically about our students of color and our Native American students where we are falling behind in graduation and success rates. So this data will support the need to support our students of color. And I've heard some criticism from the public that said, well, the Native American population is so small, why do you want to focus on them? And again, it goes back to where we need to teach our students in schools about our treaties and how, and even just something so simple as the protection clause in the Constitution, Articles of Section 2 that says treaties are supreme law of the land. And I sat here earlier and I talked about our Kikapu treaties. And we have a treaty with Washington from 1854 that has a protection clause or welfare clause, if you will, that says, if we Kikapus are using our best and ardent spirits to improve our lives, the government shall support them. And to me, I argue that, you know, there's no expiration to the Constitution. So it's those kinds of lessons that, you know, we need to hear in school and somewhere. And I know from my research that our students would, you know, they would, anybody would feel better if they can see themselves in the curriculum. So those two are, to me, those are just interconnected.
So we did have, while I was serving as board president in the last month, we did have an outreach to us about curriculums being developed at the state level, which you may know about. But I forwarded, our former Director of NASS sent it to us. So I'll make sure that you've seen it, but it goes to Carol's point. I think there might be something that, when you started this conversation, which you've been talking about this for a long time, there wasn't something that was necessarily packaged in a way that the district could implement into the curriculum. And it does seem to me like there is at least some professional development that can be done that Kenny's been working on. And there might be others as well. Yeah. And there might be others as well, but I will forward that on LCCU to look at as well and to Dr. Swift for your consideration. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
Anne, do you have anything?
No, I don't at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much for the report. I'll echo a lot of what my board colleague said, especially Shannon, about the information, both in the slideshow and the report and the statutory obligation that we have to use it for our budget, our budget report. I just have one question for you when I was looking over the data. In the attached report, the annual needs assessment, one of the sections that you had in there specifically was on disciplinary incidents, and you had broken it down by level. And it stood out to me a disparity of middle school versus elementary and high school. And I was just curious, when, in looking at that data, if you might have any particular insight or, and you may not because you just don't know, but any particular reason why those middle school incidents, specifically of out-of-school suspensions, were so much higher than elementary or high school?
Yeah, I think when we looked at that, we noticed similar things. We noticed that disparity as well in that. And that goes back to the work that we were doing this year with our secondary principals in general, and will continue into this next year, is understanding the why behind that and the ongoing work that we have to not just, you know, respond to what we're seeing in our buildings, but also calibrate that between our buildings and make sure that our secondary administrators have all the tools that they need, as well as the teachers, to process those behaviors as they come up. So we're evaluating that. We're looking at that, and we'll continue to work on that. Yeah.
And I just want to note, thank you, President Gordon Ross, for the question. I want to note for the community, because it's not on the slide, it's a little bit longer, that it is on page five in the report. And we have broken it down based on your excellent questions that came in over the weekend. We've broken it down to the number of students and then also to the number of events or occurrences. And we will continue that work, really to develop our tiered systems of support. That's what we'll be talking about tomorrow morning, but ensuring that those tiers of support are supporting students so that we reduce those numbers. And that's our goal, is to work on both the academic and the behavioral side of the house. So thank you for the questions and just referencing the community. I'm sorry we don't have the report up. We'll try to do that in the future, but it's page five is that data. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Somebody read the statement for me, please.
I'll volunteer tonight. The USD 497 Board of Education welcomes public comments and thanks you for taking time to talk with us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. Patrons who wish to participate in public comment must email publiccomment@usd497.org by noon on the day of the board meeting to participate in person. Information provided will make it possible for district staff or the board to follow up with you as necessary. This is your time to share your opinions. However, public comment is not the appropriate forum for making complaints about specific staff or students. If your comments relate to complaints concerning students or staff, such complaints must be addressed to district staff as provided under board policies KN and GAE, which are general complaints and personnel complaints. The board president or presiding officer of the meeting may direct that a public comment request be redirected to staff to comply with board policy, including and/or to protect the privacy of individual staff or students. If you need assistance in sharing a complaint or concern with district staff, please let the board clerk or other district staff know. Topics discussed in public comment shall be germane to the business of the board. Furthermore, comments must comply with standards laid out in board policy GAE and board policy JGECA, which are anti-bullying and hazing of staff and students. Comments or acts that are threatening to staff, the board, or others in attendance, including the use of language or behavior that is disruptive of the board meeting, will not be permitted during public comment. In addition, because students may be in attendance or watching online, members of the public will refrain from using foul or obscene language. The district assumes no responsibility or liability for the information shared during public comment. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools. The board president or presiding officer will invite comment on topics not included on the meeting agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments relating to agenda items are welcome. After the board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic, limit your comments to three minutes. Patrons who are unable to comply with the above procedures may email their comments or viewpoints to the board at schoolboard@usd497.org.
All right. We'll start with Justin. Yes.
Hey, Raggy Ann Costello, I see your mute button is working this meeting. Remember that meeting when you called me crazy Justin Speace on your microphone? I remember. Last meeting, I was removed from the meeting by Gordon Ross as I spoke during general public comment for saying a naughty word. And the word was D-U-M-B-A-S-S-E-S. And even worse, I said it twice. Oh, no. But a speaker at a previous meeting wore a shirt that said the word D-U-M-B-A-S-S, and he also said the naughty word D-U-M-B-A-S-S. But I can't? Is that unequal protection of the 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution? Is that retaliation against me? Is it viewpoint discrimination? Seems like it. But if I can spell naughty words here at the meetings and people can wear naughty words on their clothes, then why can't I say these same words? You say it's because students may be listening to the meetings, but are you saying they don't know how to spell? You're the school board. Are you saying your students can't spell? It's a lame excuse. It's called free speech, guys. And what I was going to say last meeting before being removed by Gordon Ross for saying naughty words was, that last meeting Gordon Ross was voted president of this school board. But people might not remember that Gordon was voted out of his school board position during the November 2021 election, and then these idiots on the school board voted him back on the board in August of 2022 after a board member resigned. Now you're president. A guy the community no longer wanted on the board is now running the board. He's unelected and is now running the board. And so with leadership and decision-makers like that on this board, it's no wonder you all hired a teacher that raped students in your schools. You're foolishly more worried about adults saying naughty words here during the meetings than you are for properly vetting teachers to make sure you aren't hiring child sexual predators. Get it together, guys. Have some perspective. I want to talk about my fully uncensored communications at meeting petition that I'd like for you guys to consider signing, and that acronym is F-U-C-A-M, and it's pronounced fuck'em.
That's your warning, Justin.
Well, Gordon, F-U-C-A-M is not a naughty word. That's F-U-C-A-M. It's pronounced fuck'em.
Thank you, Justin, for joining us this evening. All right. So we're going to move on to Carrie. Yes.
You know, this weekend, the craziest thing happened to me. I was in Walmart, and I walked up to an employee and asked him a question. They let me ask them the question, and they didn't interrupt or tell me that they were going to trespass me. Then, wildly enough, as I walked back to my car, a woman and her son, who I didn't know, approached me in the parking lot and asked me for money. I kindly answered her with a no, thank you, and got in my car and drove away. It's crazy how people communicate these days by asking each other questions, unless you are Ms. Kelly Jones, who, after my last speech, we all know is the fake victim. The fake victim campaigned to work for we, the people, yet doesn't let you ask her questions in a parking lot, even when Officer Bishop and her police dog is present. The fake victim lies about her interactions with people who don't agree with her choices and gets her bestie, Ms. Superintendent, to entertain and co-sign her lies by trespassing people from public property when they have not broken a law. I was not threatening or harassing by trying to ask a question of an elected official. If I was, I'm sure Officer Bishop and her dog, police dog, wouldn't have ignored me by, were back on me to walk up the stairs and back into the building. My only crime is calling out these lying board members along with Ms. Superintendent and fighting for freedom of speech. I guess the Constitution doesn't apply when it comes to USD 497's boardroom, yet in the district libraries, anyone, anything goes. To the community, the school board needs to be spending time figuring out real issues versus silencing people. They could appear and pat themselves on the back during every meeting when school absences in Lawrence have gone up 82%, to the point where the average student misses more than three weeks of school in a year. USD 497 has lost three times more students than any district within the Topeka to the Kansas City commuter corridor, equaling about to be approximately 1,600 students, all while the population of Lawrence has grown every single year. But they lie to your face and tell you that it is due to birth rates being low and how there isn't enough affordable housing. Vote Kelly Jones, aka the fake victim, and Shannon Kimball out in November, because like President Trump once said, quote, "They don't know what the fuck they're doing," end quote.
That's your warning, Carrie.
This board is full of hypocrites who provide the same words to minors that I have said in here and been removed. I told the truth about how their policy is bullshit and unconstitutional.
Thank you, Carrie, for joining us this evening.
Like former-
Dr. Swift, any announcements?
I believe we're all wrapped up. Thank you, sir.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you.